Will join us. Lee, are you able to hear us okay?
I am, thank you.
Great. All right, well, it's called to order. Council meeting for Thursday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty one. We're gonna start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. Consider your honor, for which it stands, one nation, under God. In this world, delivered to you in justice.
Allison, would like to do a roll call.
Mayor Sproul is excused. President Grunberg.
Here.
Grunberg. Counselor Drabith.
Present.
Counselor Gilligan.
Present.
Counselor Bluhart. Counselor Newman is. Is choking.
Right?
And Counselor Wilson. You have six councilors present here.
Great. We've got Deputy McMahon here.
Hello, everyone. W. Andrew McMahon, Yamo County Sheriff's Office. When I go over the September crime steps. I'm just gonna go down the list aggravated assault we had won. We had a burglary of a residence. We had four mercenaries or. Two motor vehicle thefts. Two drug laws. One DUI. Six simple assaults. Three stolen property. Three vandalism. And more specifically, we have a detailed list. So I separated out all the call types. There were twelve field investigations done. There was one recovered stolen vehicle. There was one assault. Three noise ordinance complaints. Traffic complaints, fifteen suspicious calls. One information call. Two animal nuisances. Thirty-three follow-ups on other cases. Nine ordinances. One miscellaneous arrest, one animal abuse. Six traffic hazard calls. Twenty-four traffic stops. Four non-injury crashes. Five civil complaints. One reckless driver. Seven civil papers served in the city. Ten domestic progresses. Two details which consist of like a city council meeting or another one, for example, a police school presentation shown on the police car and everything. Five deaths. Three unknown injury traffic crashes. Five DHS calls. Five airport checks. Ten warrant services. Two stolen vehicles. One was not actually stolen. Two medical assists, one nine-one-one open line calls. Seven harassments. One property lost or found, three prowlers. One assisting a disabled vehicle. One call about an abandoned vehicle, two alarms. Three hit and runs. Two juvenile abuse or neglects. One extra patrol, two criminal mischiefs. One criminal mischief in progress. One disturbance, three frauds. One RV ordinance, one fight. One unknown problem. One traffic collision with injury. One assault in progress. One driving law under the influence, one mental health call, one parking complaint. Two domestics. Not occurring now. Two assisting an outside agency. One trespass in progress. Re-assisting the public. Two area checks, one sex crime. One burglary and one burglary in progress. Total for the month, there were two hundred and twenty-six calls. I'll have a long list of any specific questions I can answer.
It's a very busy month.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question on the units. I understand it's three-twenty and three-twenty-one, is that right? Or has three-twenty-one changed?
So as far as who's assigned.
Yeah.
So it's assigned deputies to Lafayette now on three-twenty. And then Debbie Schmidt is three-twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Okay, thank you.
And looking down the list because also gives the unit breakdown of who responded the calls.
Right, that's why I asked.
With the exception of the contract deputies, there were several others because we don't work every single day.
Right.
We don't work every hour of the day. So people supplementing from rural patrol detectives. There was even some MAP PD units that came to assist on high priority calls. State police also. Detectives doing DHS reports and things.
So I had a question. This will now in session as of this week. You guys changed anything up? Or I know in the past I've seen occasionally somebody sitting out there, you know, telling people to slow down.
I could tell you, I actually got some good feedback the other day. Debbie Schmidt's been up at the school. Doing the starts, monitoring speed. He gets kind of in traffic, you know, and trying to drop off kids and things. But he's been sitting out there giving a good presence patrol, which I always appreciated.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from Wendy Hackman, Andrea Fields from CERT. You guys come on up to the podium here.
So, I'm Wendy Hackman. I'm now a training chair of Yamal County CERT and this is Andrea Fields, who's the Cybersecurity.
Secretary.
Secretary. So if you don't know CERT about much about CERT, but CERT, we train people to be able to take care of themselves and their families in an emergency situation. People are self-sufficient. If something does happen in a catastrophic emergency, they can take care of themselves. We teach them to build a kit so that they have supplies on hand. Basic first aid, how to put out a fire, that kind of stuff throughout our academy. It's free for anybody that wants to attend. There's no requirement that you join our group. So we do have a group of core people. We have, I think we have seventy-five right now that are part of our group that we cover the whole county. And fortunately, we don't have a lot of disasters that happen here. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of disasters that happen here, so we don't get called out to do things. So we do a lot of community events. We have helped out at the fires. Like last year, all the fires, we helped out there with doing. Roadblocks and stuff. We help out at the county fair. We just did the cooling shelter here in Lafayette not too long ago. We always try to help out at like the Fourth of July and the pumpkin festival and stuff here in Lafayette as well. And so we just do a lot of community events to get people aware of us and to get people so that they recognize us and stuff as well. And so we just wanted to really thank you guys for giving your donation. You guys give us a donation every year and we really, really appreciate that. This past year, we were able to send people to the National CERT Convention in St. Louis. And with your guys' generous donation, we were able to send an extra person. So there was four of us that way. And we got to learn a lot about the new, there's a new FEMA, FEMA puts out the paperwork and the program. And there's a new program that's coming out that, well, it's actually already out now for FEMA updating the CERT curriculum. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we have not been able to have an academy in a year and a half. We were hoping for September, but with the new variant, we canceled it. So now we're fingers crossed for January. But like I said, it's free to everybody to join. We also were able to do lots of different breakout sessions. So there was some on spontaneous volunteers, donation management. How to maintain your groove and a lot of different stuff that was really good information to just everybody to be able to join. Join in learning all that. So instead of just one person knowing all the information, now we have like four people that have all that knowledge now to be able to help grow our group.
That's wonderful.
Wendy, you, CERT helped so much last year in our drive-through pumpkin fast. Work in traffic and intersections and some, have you been, are you dialed into our drive-through next month?
Yeah, we have. We have the request. So we just need somebody to send us a request because sometimes we don't always keep up with.
Right.
Local events. It's hard sometimes to keep up with everything. But yeah, we already have a request. We already have the approval. So we don't put the sign up out for our people. So usually like a week to ten days prior because nobody signs up this far advanced.
Right, okay.
But yeah, we'll have people there.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I know you guys helped the volunteer fire department quite a bit with their fundraising events, the pancake breakfast, the five Ks, I mean, year after year, and I know it's always great. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we like, you know, we really like, we really like to help out the communities whenever we can. You know, we enjoy it and then, you know, it helps everybody to start working together.
Yeah. So January is when you're hoping to start up the community classes?
We're hoping. We have a schedule for September to start. It has to, we have to be done with it before the holidays or people don't finish.
Yeah, yeah.
So we were, we had one scheduled in September and we were gonna do it in Newbury because the armory is huge. So we can get, you know, social distancing and stuff there too, but we had to cancel it. So fingers crossed, we're hoping now.
Twelve weeks, six weeks, twelve weeks?
Nine.
Nine weeks. Somewhere in there. Perfect.
We've tried to do like an all-day Saturday, all-day Saturday, all-day Sunday thing, and it's just, it's exhausting and people work all week and so.
That's a lot of information to absorb in one weekend.
Too much to take in.
Yeah.
You need some time.
Yeah. Wonderful. Well, thank you so much in coming and updating us what you do with the grant funds. We appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys.
Did anyone have any questions for Wendy and Andrea?
Are these the grants that we just did or was it? Okay.
Well, this was.
Oh, the twenty, no, yeah, it's been twenty twenty.
Okay.
What year is it? Twenty twenty, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were gonna do the National CERT Conference in twenty twenty, but it got postponed until twenty twenty-one. So we just rolled over the funds to use it for the twenty twenty-one event.
Oh, okay.
So.
Great. I appreciate you guys coming and kind of reporting back. I like to see that.
Well, we appreciate you guys supporting us financially. It means a lot. We're a nonprofit, so we're under the Emergency Management Office, which is under the sheriff's office, but we don't get any funding. So, you know, they make copies for us and, you know, and that kind of stuff, but like everything else, we buy. We buy like, you know, we bought our trailer. We bought all our supplies in the trailer. We have a wonderful spot over in the community center. One of the rooms of the community center is ours. So we have supplies and stuff that we can store there. We do our monthly training at the community center when we can meet in person. And, you know, it's nice to be able to have everything there so we can just grab whatever we need.
Wonderful. Lee, did you have any questions? Don't let me forget about you over there.
No, that's okay. I appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It took me a second to realize that was Lee. Finally, no longer. Yeah, the Bushman Lee.
Yeah.
All right, approval of the minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read through last month's minutes? And if so, were there any concerns?
There's one typo I found. Page four of six, section nine, towards the bottom, the second to last paragraph. I'm pretty sure that should say approved glass, the glass recycling.
Oh, snap. There's a G missing.
And maybe I'm splitting hairs and you can tell me it doesn't need to be removed, but on page one of six, item four, report from Yamo County Sheriff. Sergeant Elliott presented the report. At the end of that, I think that should be removed. It says that provide a much more granular level of information. I think that's a matter of opinion. And I don't know that that should be there. I think the data we're getting is better than we've gotten in the past, but I wouldn't say it's much more granular level.
So you propose a stop at council and Elliot discuss the enhanced report, report and annual report, which is attached tonight, item nine B.
Yes.
And stop there. Does anyone oppose to that change?
Was there a reason that Kevin put that?
Just a choice of words is all.
Okay, I didn't know if like Sergeant Elliott had implied that or something.
Well, I think he did imply, but could be a better word, you know, that describes it.
I have no problem with it staying in, personally myself.
I'm okay with it being removed just because it is an opinion. Because the report is attached to nine B, so.
I just recall him, Sergeant Elliott speaking, stating that there is more descriptive and whatnot. So that's why. I read it as that's coming essentially from him. So that's why I don't have an issue with it being in. Yeah.
Um, I mean, I can see both sides. I would like to see minutes stick to like factual. So if he said they provide and we quoted him on that or something, you know, that makes sense to keep in there. I guess I'd prefer to have it removed for the other points brought up.
Can we all agree that there's more detail, though it's not necessarily granular? Can we just say a more extensive or something like?
It does say that. Discuss the enhanced report and annual report.
Okay, so if we have enhanced, then I feel like we could probably remove the rest because it is enhanced. I don't know if it's granular.
Okay. So.
Period after ninety.
Yes.
Yes.
Any others? We need a motion.
I'm going to approve the City of Lafayette City Council meeting minutes from August twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one with the noted changes to paragraph four on page one of six. And the correction to the incorrect spelled word on page four of six. I second that.
Well, in favor?
I.
My.
Okay. Any additions or deletions from today, tonight's agenda? Any citizens input on non-adjunct items? Seeing no citizens? No offense, Larry. Unless you had other comments you want to make. Okay. All right, Chuck and Mike, right along here. We're gonna go to the first action item, which is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one-ten, inflationary indexing for the water transportation and park system development charges. So our SDC charges, they're regularly updated. This one helps address inflation, which would. Make the new amounts effective October first. Preston, you want to emphasize some on this? Maybe a little education of the process of how these charges move out?
Sure. A couple of points. I'm sure you're all familiar with. System development charges are the fees that new development pays when they impact our existing systems. In this case, we're talking water, sewer, parks. So these would be a portion per home or per EDO equivalents of its apartments or businesses or it's all calculated. And this isn't a charge that affects our utility fees or water, sewer, utility. It has nothing to do with that. These are fees that we collect at the time of building permits or new structures. The increases here that you see bring them up to date to this month. September is a good month to pick in the air to do updates like this, inflationary things. And so because they all have different approval dates, well, with this resolution, we bring them all up to the same level. And if we end up doing an annual look, well, then we could look at September as being that month for each year. These increases are based on the engineer's construction cost index. That's the inflationary index that we use. And these increases for these three are the maximum you could possibly increase those tonight. You could certainly go less if you want, but that is the most you could increase.
When was the last time that we increased these? Because we did increase the SDCs recently. So do you remember which?
Correct.
When that was last done? Because that information isn't.
Yeah, it's in the resolution. It's kind of embedded in that.
Right there.
The water, you're looking at more than a year. It's in here somewhere. The parks is then nine months. So it's, and then. Sewer, it's in the resolution. I'd have to look at it and see. It was. The sewer was updated after the water. The water was the oldest in the sewer and then the parks. The park, you remember, was just last December. So we're bringing them all together. So we don't have to piecemeal them in the future. Brings them up to date as far as the inflation goes. And so your decision is to increase this to what the ordinance would expect, but you don't have to do that. You can do something less. So this doesn't get into the projects or methodology. This is strictly the inflationary indexing of those three SDCs.
So is the sewer zero because we can't raise it?
Correct.
Or when would the sewer be able to be raised?
Well, after we do a new master plan and a new. And a new STC methodology and update, it's a real big deal.
So there's no option right now than what we currently have to increase the fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Historically, why haven't we increased them all at the same time previously?
Well, up until these recent updates, you weren't able to do that.
Oh, okay.
The resolutions didn't allow indexing.
Okay. Does it make more sense like you said, you just get it done at once?
So I'm a little disappointed. The financial impact just said to be determined and not, I mean, we've got a major build-out going on. As we speak, the city has some idea of a range, you know, maybe between thirty and a hundred and twenty homes or something could have been said that this is, we expect, you know, in the next year, this many. I would have liked to have seen those numbers split out because, you know, to be determined is just like, oh, we don't have any information on how this will affect us. It makes me think we don't really need it.
Yeah, well, I didn't mean to do it that way. But the budget this year is based on a certain number of homes and I, I think it was fifty, but I have to go back and look at my budget. That's what we. Budgeted impact on our SDCs for this current fiscal year. I'd have to go back and look, but there is a certain number of homes that we figured would come in, and that's what we based our revenues and expenditures in those STC funds.
So do we budget on the current or do we budget on what we expected the proposed to be?
We budget on what's real, and that is the rates at the time the budget was adopted. And then we did a projection on how many homes with building permits we would do. But I did a projection on increasing the utility fees too. That was rejected by the budget committee, so I reduced the budget. So I did not include increases to SDCs. It wasn't necessary to keep operations going like utility fees are. It's an entirely different question. So. I think this is a very, you know, good stewardship of our funds. It makes sense to bring them all up to speed together so we can do them together in the future. And this money that's raised goes into the, goes into the STC funds. It won't even be used this fiscal year. It gets in there like SDCs. They're there to build up for major projects. And so these SDCs are very important to the city, just not this year. So it's important to increase them as you go, not because of projects, because then you're too late. You do them when you can, and that's tonight.
A question on the approximate fifty homes with the building permits that have those building permits already been issued? I assume so because it's part of the new housing development. And so there, these rates won't affect those ones, but any future ones coming in for the next phases of the development, this would apply?
Correct, as of October first.
Okay.
Any building permits that don't get picked up before that. Will be charged.
Yeah.
Newer.
How does this compare with other cities in Oregon of this size?
Well, I don't have that, you know, we did that. I guess we put that together when the last time we did the STC updates, the parks and for water and for sewer. So I don't have a comparison for you.
For Yamo County?
No, I don't.
I think when I looked into it, we're a little bit higher.
I know Carlton's quite a bit higher than we are.
I think Newburgh is quite a bit higher as well.
I thought.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm thinking Yambini and Dayton, but I remember.
They're a bit lower than they are.
Yeah.
They have higher city taxes, so there's, you know. The problem is it's not just straight numbers. You've got other revenue that impacts that for the city. So it's, you know, sometimes it's hard to, I see Lee holding up his.
Yeah, I just want to note on here. So to me, the SDCs bring in revenue from, especially with our current state of open lots developers. And if we can source revenue from bigger companies and developers as opposed to citizen tax money, I'm all for this kind of raise, especially, you know, seven point five four percent for parks. We have parks that are still waiting to be funded, just based on the source of this money and what it's going to do for us. I'm in support of this right now.
Anyone else? Questions?
So I do know this cost is usually passed directly on to the home buyers if it's a developer. Which, you know, as fees increase for builders, then the prices just continue to go up and up and up. I think there's been a lot of concern already that there's nothing affordable, even the new stuff going in. I don't know that this will necessarily change that, but, you know, every little bit is passed along. So I think fifteen, almost fifteen percent seems fairly excessive. I looked up today, the two thousand and twenty-one expected inflation index, not for the engineering one, but it's about five point four percent. So having something that's almost three X that seems like a lot. The other thing too, if we're trying to understand financial impacts, instead of September, it makes sense, well, maybe in April or May is when we make the changes effective so that we can actually budget for those. Instead of just kind of saying, well, I don't know how much money we're gonna get from them, but let's, let's charge the most we possibly can. It seems a little bit backwards to me, but. That's just my view, I guess.
Well, it's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong. We don't know, because of the way that the development is going in in different phases, the developer hasn't said specifically how many houses in each phase. Because there, some of them are.
because there, some of them are different levels of what, what he can actually build. So I think that's really hard to project what impact it's going to have, or you know, how much money can be collected from that. And so there is a number given, and I think we won't know that until the permits are actually applied for, but by then it's too late to charge the, you know, to, to, to charge the new fees.
Right.
So is that why you're?
Correct.
Okay, I'm like, I'm trying to explain it and say it at the same time and go, okay, that's how I understand it. Okay.
So that makes sense, but even having a range of, you know, we've got a hundred and fifty buildable lots we expect to have open next year. It could be, you know, anywhere between one and a hundred and fifty or, or something.
But the way that he's doing it, they could be larger homes or they could be, you know, small.
Exactly. Right. Yeah. So that's where a range comes in and could be useful instead of just saying, we don't know.
My thought on this is these people are going to benefit from future projects. They're coming in, they're using resources, and I agree with Lee. Rather than increasing water rates, putting it on the citizens here. You know, these people are going to benefit, just like we did when we paid STCs that we purchased homes here, which I did. You know, it goes all into that. And so I personally think it makes more sense to raise this than to pass it on to everybody.
I agree. And if we have growth, we need a way to fund growth, including securing long, long-term water. You know, ten years out, twenty years out, thirty years out. I, I think it's important to stay on top of these fees because you go skip them a few years and you're like, oh, now I've got to raise them forty percent. Sorry, we skipped too many. And then there have been cities that have had to do that with the things like their water rates. Because they skipped too many years. They didn't want to put that burden on their citizens and then they had to skyrocket them. I don't think we should be doing that, well, ever. Incremental is a lot easier pill to swallow when you're, when you're dealing with inflation. And I, I think these are appropriate.
So.
Yeah. Hey, I just, I just wanted to, Jim, I just wanted to respond to one of your points here. I, I recognize that developers are going to pass this on to home buyers, but I also believe that the majority, and certainly not all, but the majority of folks who buy new homes in this town are moving to this town. And that brings in revenue from outside towns. If somebody moves here from, you know, say Sherwood, there, if that cost is paid off to them, then great, we're bringing in revenue from outside of the city. I would prefer that revenue come from folks outside of the city than from our own constituents. Any outside funding we can get is great. And that's, I mean, that's why we're trying to improve downtown and get better businesses is to get other people to come visit Lafayette, pour more money into Lafayette. So while you're, you're absolutely right, that cost is going to be passed off. Every developer is going to do that. I don't think that necessarily negates the idea of, of passing these STCs to the developers wherever they choose to pass them to.
I personally had a question for you. So Kayla was mentioning, you know, trying to, trying to increase water STCs versus water rates. STCs can only be used for infrastructure. What, what commonalities do we would be able to be, you know, we say, okay, we're, we're increasing the costs so that this is taken care of, that's also taken care of is the water bill. Does that make sense?
It does. You, you've got the water utility fund and you've got the water STC fund. And there's restrictions on both, but you're basically right that the STC fund is going to be for infrastructure. Now it could pay for engineering fees and surveys and, you know, things related to projects. Not so much maintenance, but there are exceptions. Like if we have some improvements at the, at the water treatment facility that serves everybody in the city, those could be STC eligible. So it gets kind of complicated when you look at what projects are eligible and for what percentage. And we leave that up to our engineer I, I, to, to figure out for, to assist me in budgeting and all that. Utility funds are much wide-ranging to pay for staff salaries, to studies, to infrastructure. You know, it's really wide-ranging. The, the water meters, for instance, part of that could be paid for both STC and, and utility fees. Our software system we run. We're looking at having to replace our folding machine here that for water and sewer billing. That's, that's a utility fund expense. So materials and services, personnel services are, come out of the utility fund. Some capital does too. So the more you have an NSDC fund, the less you're going to take from your utility funds for those capital needs. And, you know, we're talking about our most major critical piece of infrastructure right now is this second reservoir. That's hopefully doesn't require any utility fees. That's combination of grants and as well as STCs. And hopefully utility funds don't have to pay for any of that. We just went through a couple of years of getting through major water improvements where the general fund had to kick in seven hundred thousand dollars to finish the water intertie with MAC. So sometimes neither the utility or STC can pay your bills, you know. We're not under the gun likely then the last ten years. But a second reservoir is without a doubt the most important infrastructure project we have facing the city right now.
But we also don't have the surplus that we've had in the past because it was spent for the water tie-in. So this would create a surplus also.
Well, it, it does.
For STC specific projects.
For STC, yes. And we tend to spend water STCs as fast as we bring it in.
Right.
We're not, we're not setting stuff aside for a reservoir. We can talk about that coming up, you know, later in the agenda. But other STCs aren't quite like that. We're building some capacity for major projects.
Okay, thank you. So were the parks were just updated nine months ago and they're at seven and a half percent? I thought they were current nine months ago. That's ten percent annually. Is that expected year after year that we're going to be about ten percent?
I hope not, Jim. I hope not. Because you, you know, you see those prices reflected in the bids that we get for projects. Water sewer streets that come in higher. Because of all the factors, you know, our engineer mentioned when he was here last with the labor market, scarcity of parks. And as well as the construction index. I mean, it's, it's all kind of working against us right now if you want to do projects. But all the more important reason to, to shore up our, our STC funds. Because in, in street and parks, those are, those aren't going to be used this year. They're being set aside for bigger projects.
Greg, do you have any comments and concerns?
No. No.
Any other thoughts?
Is anyone in favor of increasing them, but not to this degree? Or is everybody in favor of maxing them out?
Personally, I'm in favor for maxing, maxing them out because of the development coming in. I think it's going to bring in so many families and kids that this money is, we're going to need it at some point.
Well, from here, we would need a motion to move forward.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten inflationary indexing for water transportation and parks STCs effective October first of twenty twenty-one.
Need a second?
One second with that.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Hi.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Our next agenda item is financial support for creation of nonprofits. Okay, so we've talked about the creation of various nonprofits here at council meetings. This proposal authorizes using funds to help support two specific nonprofits in their development. The first proposed one is the Lafayette Community Activities Team, which is a five oh one C three organization. They can accept charitable, charitable donations to support community events. The other one is the Downtown Business Association. And that would be a five oh one C six organization that can accept grants, funds, advocate and provide services to its members and recruit certain downtown investors. We've got Larry Strober here. Now, this has been a project of Larry's. The Downtown Business Association has been a project of Larry's for over a year. I was going to say, I mean, yeah, he interviewed us a couple of years, at least eighteen months, yeah, two years ago, I guess it would have been, yeah.
So here's, here's my proposal. I would like to understand why they're put lumped together. And I personally feel like they're too separate. I mean, it's asking for the monies for the same purpose, which is understandable, but having them together instead of each individual. And I, I don't understand why they're lumped together. That's personally, I think that anytime that we're advocating for spending money from a general fund, we should have it a specific discussion item, not a group discussion item. Does that make sense?
I think it certainly split them up in the actual voting too.
Okay, I, I, I would feel more comfortable with that so that it's more understandable to the citizens.
It could be two separate motions.
Right, okay. Are you any concerns or questions about me saying that?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Question, the estimated ten thousand, is that ten thousand for both or ten thousand individually?
No, it's for both.
Okay.
And I've been working with a, with a, a law firm in, in McMenville that has set up several of these in McMenville. So I just never got a call from them until yesterday, as far as a, a budget really. So you know, how much could we really spend this fiscal year? Probably not ten thousand. But, but both of these are, are coming on about the same time, you know, if you approve the the going forward with the LCAT, you, you also have on this agenda to move forward on the second half of the downtown study. So they're both coming kind of the same time. And, and that's actually kind of a good thing as it's been explained to me to, to, to see how each one can cover certain things and actually kind of be a backstop for each other. It can, you know, in terms of what they're doing in the community and how they can each complement one another. So that's, that was all educational. The five oh one C three is a lot more work than the C six. So if you break it apart, you know, you just cut it down the middle, you know, but for the main, you know, this isn't something that was contemplated as a project within our budget, but it's provided in funds that we have under consulting services, we can, we can, we could do that. So that's why it's coming before you. If it was in our budget and called out as a project, da, 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 da. That, that would be one thing, but it wasn't. And so, so it's, I think it's important that you support the effort and and, and this is a good timing, you know, to deal with them both at once.
Larry, would you mind telling us a little bit about where you stand with the Downtown Business Association? Three of us have worked with you the last couple of years, but we have three newer counselors that, that probably need to be brought up to speed.
The initial study was to get interviews, half-hour interviews with all stakeholders, business owners, property owners, builders, anyone involved with the downtown corridor. And we wound up interviewing thirty-three people. And we were trying to get who, who would be excited about being part of an association to build the downtown. And we, we had a number of people signed up and then COVID hit and Don Lear died and a couple of businesses disappeared. So the end result of that study was to propose an economics development facilitator to develop the five oh one C six. Develop officers, people who want to, want to participate, put a business plan together and then an implementation plan. And you get Lafayette is the only one of the small towns around here that do not have an improvement district or business association or some type of promotion for downtown. So I'm proposing a six-month effort to recruit, develop the five oh one C six as an organization with officers and a mission statement. Develop a business plan with the participating, and I'll get a list of all of the businesses and ask everyone on that list who wants to participate. We'll have a president, vice president and committees, and then the implementation plan. So at the end of six months, we'll make a recommendation to the council of how, how do we get Lafayette back into twenty twenty-one? Get it, everyone wants a safe, eclectic place where they don't have to go to McMenville or Newburgh to shop. And I, I think a hundred percent of the participants agreed what they'd like to see. And it's not going to happen overnight. So we need to develop the steps, the participants. The, the energy is there. There, there are people who I know want to be in charge of this. So with your support, I'd love to get started. I think the time is right. We've waited a year and a half. I'd like to start doing this October one or whenever we think it makes sense. But, you know, the, the reports coming out or that COVID is going to peak sometime this month and start getting better. So I think October is the right.
Fingers crossed. Yeah.
Any questions?
How will, how will the formation of our urban renewal district and its boundaries affect this?
A long term, it, it should affect it positively, but initially, I, I don't see any effect. I mean, one of the things that as a Rotary President and a Rotary Assistant Governor, and I was part of the SBDC Small Business Development at Salem for three years. My outreach is pretty, it, it, it goes all over Yamhill County. So I know a lot of people. I know how to get people involved. You know, we, we need to have a, a presence, you know, with the wineries, with the AVAs, with developers, with the real estate people. And once I think they know that Lafayette is real and Lafayette is interested in your business, I think we'll make a difference. And we have, I, I think there have been some false starts over the last ten, fifteen years. But I, I like to succeed in what I do. And, and you know, like I said, it's not going to happen overnight. But taking the right baby steps and getting the right people to invest in this town because they have my support, they have your support, and they have the Downtown Business Association support. I think we can, we can make a difference.
How many people will you need on the, on the association's board or, or group of people to make it successful?
I'd like somewhere between eight and twelve.
How many do you, like, how many are you sure of that you can count on at this point?
I can count on the Bostos. I can count on Lafayette RB. Steve Gritman there. I can count on Martha's. I can count on Hamlin. I can count on the Roadhouse Pub. That's a good start.
Shannon?
Shannon still own, Shannon Thorson. I know Shannon pretty well. So I think we're, we can, we have almost that, that, that core group identifying.
True value.
The old true value.
Between bells and peoples. But my, my role is really going to be providing, I mean, the, these people themselves, they, they have to have the vision. And we will develop a plan, but it's their vision, it's their energy. And, and their resources that are going to make it happen.
And Councilor Drummond, if COVID hadn't hit, we already have a downtown business association in place that could complement. That could complement, to be a sounding board for projects for urban renewal and all that, so. We don't have that, so it's just gotta be done, uh, uh, through Larry and his group and. We can get a lot of feedback from those folks when that is part of the process, you know, of, of. Coming up with a downtown business association and all, uh, and part of that work can be certainly looking at projects and, and urban renewal. Uh, uh, interest and, and that's a good spot for, uh, uh, board members, you know, once you get the. Uh, uh, urban renewal up and running. Uh, uh, you know, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend it until it's a done deal. Once you have that, then you could open that up, uh, but, uh. That's kind of a discussion for next month, you know, with our urban renewal consultant, but, uh, it's, uh. Urban or no, the downtown business association are very complimentary. Very complimentary, in the near term and in the long term, yes.
Yeah, so I interviewed these three ladies and, uh, I would start with, you know, introducing, interviewing Greg, Lee, Jim. A- as an addendum to the initial survey. And then, you know, start the recruitment process. And that, I figured, is, will take. My proposal, you know, to, just to understand how I work as a consultant, I, uh. I took forty percent off what I normally charge because I live here and I'd like to see this happen. And I, I'm estimating five hours a week for six months, but if it's more than that.
Well, your half hour meetings, I know, take about two.
I think Haley's took about three.
Those are long interviews.
Yeah, and actually Marie's was maybe half a day.
I believe that.
But, but, uh, you know, it needs to be a cohesive group with, with a vision that works complementary to each other. And, uh, we, we had that enthusiasm.
Yeah.
And we were ready to go and then COVID hit.
Yeah, I remember.
Lee, do you have any questions for Larry?
I, I, I do not have any questions. I, I was, uh. I was a planning commissioner when this was going on and I'm somewhat familiar with how this has progressed.
Yeah, well, anybody that wasn't interviewed before as part of that process, cause council and planning commission. Were, uh, you interviewed that, uh, uh, certainly can get plugged in, you know, uh, some of the new counselors and stuff.
Right, and Jim, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we could use all the help we can get, so, you know, anyone has some input, uh, some people we should be talking to, whether they're local or outside. Um, I have the time to do it. You're getting some of the people in town who maybe don't have the time, so that, that's my role is to. Get the vision, get it down in writing, put the plan together and see how we could, we can make it happen, cause we can make it happen. You know, I, I know, uh, Dealinda Koelow very well in Amity, and she runs. The, the improvement district, I think they call it there, and I know the people in Yamhill and, well, in Carlton, we're not gonna be Carlton. But, um, we can be a whole lot better than we are right now, so that's the goal.
So, so I had a question, is this, I mean, we're, we're saying we're splitting this, uh, which I think is a good idea, so five thousand here. Um, it, how, how tied together is this and the other proposal? Is it like, uh? Do them both or it's not gonna succeed? Um, I'd like to understand, cause it, cause if we were gonna put two together, it'd almost make sense to say. We're doing the LCAT and we're doing the downtown business association, but we've got it now split into so many different things. If we improve this and then, since this is just a discussion item on ten A, um, I would assume it's an action item for a meeting coming up. You know, if we choose not to, are we, are we misaligning our, our timelines, um?
Yeah, uh, Councilor Drummond, I think, uh. Uh, the, uh, either one of these would go forward if you had approved it on the, on the creating the nonprofits. And, uh, that can be independent of Larry's work. Uh, or you approve Larry's work and not the creation of nonprofits, I mean. We want a part, we want a forge ahead on both accounts. And, and, and the city should be supportive of that, so they do work together. Uh, uh, but they're not gonna fail if you vote it, no, on any three of those. We're gonna do our best we can to put it forward. I just won't be hiring a consultant to help with any of this.
Okay, so, I, I would like to go on record that I, I do support LCAT, I support the downtown business association. It just seems like, you know, even talking about when we did the grants and we said, hey, it's great to have people come before us. Um, you know, with LCAT, we've heard discussions, what the plan is, all of this, um. I, I think that that's got a really good chance of succeeding, uh, on its own. I think that this downtown business association is a good idea. I hear that there's people supporting it. I don't see that. Um, it's on the agenda, it's public, I don't see any of these business owners, um. I'm not saying they have to be here, but if, if our, um, if its success is based on us, you know, um. Paying out another eleven thousand dollars for a consultant that's, you know. I, I think you, uh, I haven't met you personally, I think you do good work from everything I've heard about you. But if you're the glue that holds the downtown business association together and there's, you know, um. I haven't seen anything else that would say that, okay, once you kind of start taking your hands off after that six months. That it's gonna be able to succeed on its own, um, so that's, that's kind of what I'm missing here. And makes me uneasy about saying, yeah, let's just pull the trigger on it right now, um, cause I do wanna see it succeed, I don't wanna have a false start.
That was the reason for the initial survey was to see whether there was enough energy and interest and there was.
And it's a very extensive study.
Yeah, and the six month goal is for me to, to get this downtown business association started. Su- succeeding in certain projects and for me to move away and for it to go on its own.
Impressive, and just to clarify, the ten thousand's not just for consultants, that's also the fees that would go to this law firm to actually create these two. Organizations to form them.
That's all the ten thousand, the eleven thousand's separate.
Yeah, that's right.
Please, yeah, Lee looks like he's gonna explode over there.
Yeah, can I jump in? I, I'd like to jump in, so I, I think, I think that, uh. I think that my views are kind of opposite of Jim here, which is honestly not all that common, but, uh. I think I would be more supportive of the downtown business project than I would of LCAT. A- and there's several reasons here, one of which is, as some of you know, I, I work in the field of what Preston's talking about with those law firms and five oh one C threes. Uh, I mean, I wouldn't touch them with a ten foot pole anymore because I've learned my lesson and they just, they get expensive fast. Um, in addition, we have great activities here already. I mean, our town has really done well, when you think of everything from the Fourth of July parade. The Christmas lighting, there's some Halloween thing that I'm, I, I'll be honest, I haven't been to, but there's a Halloween thing that we do and the sheriffs show up. There's a community garage sale that Hillary does a great job putting on, we have great activities already. And the downtown business, I mean, it aims at something that. Is a, is a big deal in this town, people want downtown developed, people want businesses to thrive here. It sounds like the key players, if, if you go among the businesses that everybody knows and visits in town, it sounds like a lot of them are already on board. Uh, I just, I think I'm kind of the, the, the opposite of Jim on this one, it seems like it'd work well with urban renewal. Every, all the points I'm putting together would just say to leave LCAT out for now and go with the downtown business association.
Our citizens are literally begging for a thriving downtown. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to give them that.
And I remember all the hype with a lot of the business owners down here, specifically, uh, our, and, uh, one of the stores. So.
One big thing that changed in the two years is Don Lear, who owns half of the downtown, has died. So, um, that's one of the things we need to take into account and see who, we need to work with someone from the Don Lear estate.
Yeah, are they, do you know if they're selling, uh, part of his estate or?
I just, Preston has said that his wife would be taking over, uh, his affairs. So that would be one person I'd need to meet with initially and, and see what her involvement would be.
Yeah, cause that could have a major impact, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, much appreciated. Don't go far, you're still on the agenda.
It's lonely over here.
I'm sorry.
Um, well, that's part of the reason that I thought that anytime we talk about something financial, I think it should be separated and not lumped together. So that the discussion can be made, which is the point that I made to start with. As far as the LCATs, to answer some of Lee, Lee's questions or comments or whatever, yes, the city does have activities. However, the burden of those activities are currently on the city staff. And, um, therefore, a part of what the city staff is doing. During their regularly business hours is working on these activities. And I feel like that citizens also want to be working on those activities, and so we are fiscally paying. Si- city employees to do some of these community activities. And so that, that is one part of taking those activities back from the city workers, so the city workers can concentrate on their. Regular jobs and growing those to include other activities for other. Um, a lot of the activities right now are geared towards children, which is fabulous. But gearing more activities towards senior outreach. And working with the downtown business association outreach so that we can work together to grow the city, cause as important as it is. To have good businesses come into our city, if the citizens are disconnected from the city. Then it makes it harder to have the. Impression that this is a down home citizen care kind of act, community. And so a good way to do that is to build the community activities and bring them back that have gone away.
Yeah, so, so I just wanna kind of respond to a little bit of that, so a couple of the things I mentioned, for example, are the community garage sale, the city does not put that on. Another thing is, for example, the Fourth of July parade, it seems like the city is absolutely involved, but that has a lot to do with firefighters. I, I know that Christine puts a lot of time into that. And, and I don't think that we can all honestly believe that with the formation of this LCAT organization. The city will not still be involved, you're, you're still gonna have people on, on city time, working on these, on these same items, it's. I don't think that's going to change. I also think that the expenditures that are quoted here, and there's no way for Preston to know this, because I, I don't think he's probably. You know, made his career in five oh one C threes, I don't think these expenses are actually going to be the total, I, I think that it will far outweigh this, a- and. A- as somebody who sets up these businesses, I, I don't, I, I don't know how a law firm does it for that cost. Um, I just feel like our citizens are committed and involved enough right now that I have faith in them that we're still going to have community events, whether or not this gets formulated. But for the growth of the city, for the development of downtown, the, the, the five oh one C six seems to. That, that just seems to be more important at this point. I mean, that, that's something that this town has been begging for, for a long time. Is for the downtown area to develop more business, and I think we have an opportunity here, I don't think LCAT changes much.
So I just wanna start by saying I support both of these fully, just seeing where I'm coming from, um. I've been heavily involved in the planning and implement, organization and implementation of. For the last seven years, all the pancake breakfasts, the, um, five Ks, the fire department's end of the, um. Breakfasts, or the, excuse me, the Fourth of July events, um, it's, it's no small task. And in my experience, the last seven years, you've got the same small handful of two, three, four people. Doing all the work, all of it, all the work. And that's because it's very limited to just city employees and a few select volunteers from the fire department. Um, that's a lot of work to put on just a handful of people. And it would be amazing to have a citizen group that's sustainable, one with a, a very clear outline of what that looks like. Um, you know, where you have a chair or a co-chair, you have a voting group. Um, that helps organize these two things together, because right now you've got the same four people doing all of it. Those same four people won't be here forever. And though, though, things will happen in their lives, they'll have to move on, there's not just this line of people standing here waiting to step in. And that's how you have events that are, are running great and then start, slowly start to fizzle out. Um, and that's, that's already happened, our events aren't, I mean, a lot of that's COVID. But our events even before COVID were already starting to taper down in terms of what they looked like in the past. And that's because when you have the same people doing them year after year after year, um, it, it's a lot of work and it's exhausting. So I think a sustainable group that can help, that they can grow as people move on, there's other people moving in. Um, I, I think that's beneficial to our community.
I, I just want to say that I think that if the volunteers were more widely. Publicized that they were needed for something like the Fourth of July in the demographic of the city that we have, there would be no shortage of volunteers. Um, that opportunity hasn't come up for me, uh, but some of the people in the room right there know. That that is my favorite holiday in the entire world and I would do anything to, to help with that, and I think that's shared by a lot of folks in the city. Um, in, in addition, I, I don't think we need a five oh one C three, I, I think that a committee could be formed without having a five oh one C three put in place. Uh, I, I just, I think this is a cost that we don't need to continue to do the good events that we have here.
So is your opposition to the five oh one C three part or the committee as a whole?
The, especially the five oh one C three part.
So is that a, a one time cost to set it up or are you talking about recurring every year costs to continue it?
It kind of depends on the route that the organization takes, so if I have a one C three, does, it's a charitable organization that will work with. I mean, anything from education to charitable causes to education. It, it's a realm that to me is outside of government duties, in my opinion. Um, but, you know, there's, there's certain tax implications that can come up in tax season, there's a lot that comes up for that. And I don't think people realize what they're getting into with five oh one C threes until they're in over their head. And I'm not, I, I can't support that for the city to be involved with.
So I think, if I get this correctly, the, the purpose is we're creating this, the city is. Is funding it so that the city can say, here, okay, take all of these activities that we've been, um, funding as a city. And take care of that, take that off our plate, so that it doesn't have, doesn't have to. Work with the city, but it's not, it's not working for the city, it's its own entity, is that?
Well, part of the reason for the charitable status is so that we can work with grants, so that we can work with fundraising. We can work with donations and have a way to spend those funds without having all of the tax implications.
You, you will, you will spend those funds on legal bills and tax preparation bills. That's where that money's gonna go, I mean, it, to me, like, a five oh one C six is for business, it, it's for business. Purposes, a five oh one C three is for charitable purposes. I don't think we're in any position to designate taxpayer dollars to choose what charitable donations they make. If people wanna make those donations, give them their tax dollars back, let them choose their own charities, but that's not our, that's not our job.
Are you against the five oh one C six?
No, that's for, no, I'm not, because that's for business purposes, that's what a five oh one C six is compared to a five oh one C three. Five oh one C six for business, five oh one C three is for charity. And that's something that the citizens of this town have been begging for is business development. So five oh one C six, the downtown, I'm all for that, that makes a ton of sense to me. Um, and it sounds like the key players in our town are already on board as far as businesses go. If you asked a hundred citizens what businesses they know of, ninety percent of them are gonna list the ones that Larry just mentioned. The key players seem to be on board, it seems to be a purpose that our citizens want. But the five oh one C three just kind of seems out of bounds for a city council to me.
Well, and just to maybe clarify a little bit, the, the creation of the five oh one C three is to be independent of the city. Uh, like, like you stated, Jim, it, you know, the city's the catalyst to help get it going. Uh, and, and, and support that part, uh, uh, and, and maybe and provide some, uh, supporting. For a few years, uh, for filings and all, but, uh, but that's gonna work independently of the city. Now, maybe there's a city councillor that sits on the five oh one C three board, you know, that could be something, but. But it works independently of the council and the city. And they raise their money, they do their events, they do their organizing and, and we all collaborate, but it's, it's, it'd be independent of the city.
So if somebody sat up or, and we, so what I like about this idea is that the city at any time can say, no, you're done and cut, cut off. If, if it needs to, um, if it, if it continues to work out, then, you know, the city can continue to support. But if, if a councillor or a mayor were, what, a councillor were sitting on the board. Would, if, if the LCAT came to the city council and saying, hey, can we have some money for filing fees? Would that be a conflict of interest that then would need to be, that those couns, that councillor or councillors would need to set out for on that?
Possibly, but I wouldn't worry about that, because it's, uh, it, it, several nonprofits or councillors sit on it. Sometimes they're appointed, sometimes they're just doing it on their own, uh, and it works out just great. Uh, and it works out just great. It, it's more collaboration than really uh, having, you know, uh, 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 leverage or, uh, funding, uh, uh, requirements or something. Um, I would expect if the five one C three got formed, that, uh, that, uh, the, the LCAT made something of, of grant request for activities or a project or something, uh, like other nonprofits in the community. Uh, so it's, it's really not, this isn't set up for, for the city, it's the catalyst to create an independent group.
Well, and it's Maria that did, I'm really sorry she's not here tonight. She's the one that was doing the research and she was the one that decided that the five oh one C three was the best route, because she's worked that before. And I, so I don't know the answers to your questions, Lee. I honestly don't, because I don't.
I, I don't have questions, but I think it's very hard for us to say it will operate independently of the city when the city's paying for its startup. And the city might be helping with the filings for the first three, that's not independent of the city. If someone wants to start a five oh one C three in Lafayette that's based for these goals, they're free to do so. And there may be enough citizens in here to fund the startup of it. But that, to me, that's that's just an inappropriate use of taxpayer funds. That, that is so far outside of what we're here to do, that it, it just, as you can tell, it bothers me a little bit.
So is there an issue with, like, a committee or group being formed on this and then raising the money to cover the costs?
Well, there could be a, a citizens group that forms their own nonprofit, uh, uh, that's how all of these got formed to begin with, you know, uh, uh, but, uh.
We're trying not to do that ad hoc, because we're trying to make it all community-based, not appointed committee people. So we're trying to avoid city council being in charge of the LCAT program.
How are we not in charge if we're funding it? And that, as Jim said, we can cut off funding at any point. Like, there, this is so far entangled, it's not something we can just say is independent. You, you can't just say it's independent and it's independent. We're funding it. We're talking about supporting their filings for the next few years, like, this, we're talking about cutting off their funding. This is far from independent.
My recommendation here would be one, I think we need to hear also from Marie. But I think I personally on this situation would need more time to be looking into this, so if this was something that we could table and put on the next agenda and just handle the business association portion tonight.
Which is why I asked to have them separated. Marie's not here and she's the one that looked into the specific need for filing a specific way for the sole purpose of being able to, um, re- request grants and use the grant money as well as, um, to take donations.
Yeah, I just think that, yeah, I think based on that, it's more appropriate to wait till she's here to have that conversation.
I agree.
Does anyone oppose the tabling it for next month? This, just that part, the LCAT part.
Do, do people want to vote on this tonight, or do people want to hear more on this?
I, well.
More about the five oh one C three, or at least have the opportunity to. I, I didn't realize it was so complicated. They were so complicated compared to the five oh one C six.
I have, I have stopped working on five oh one C threes in my professional life for this purpose.
All right, um, so my suggestion would be we table the LCAT portion of this till next month, when Marie can speak more to the research that she's done. No one can say they haven't had the chance. Okay. So moving towards the five oh one C six for the downtown business association. Were there any more concerns to be discussed?
I have a question. I know we're gonna talk about the American restaurant finance funds later in the meeting, but it seems to me that this, um, downtown business association and possibly, um, included proposal for kind of getting it going would fit one of the allowed expenditure reasons, which would be to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality. So can we use the funds to fund the creation of this downtown business association and the um, the proposal that comes with, um, from Larry to get that going?
Uh, the short answer is probably.
Preston, is the long answer, we need to ask the city attorney?
Uh, no, long answer is for council to talk about projects next month and, and we'll find out definitively. Uh, it could be our attorney, you bet. But, uh, tho- that's, uh, we're not gonna know anything on that tonight or next month. Uh, uh, so that's a longer discussion on the ARPA funds, but the short answer is probably, because it assists businesses, because it then impacted. Uh, but, uh, that's the best I can do for you right now, probably.
If, if we say, if we pass this tonight, without knowing for sure and saying we wanna use ARPA funds for this, can we still come back later and use them? Or do we have to say, we're using ARPA funds, we're gonna pass this and then do that? Cause if that's the case, I would rather wait a month to be able to use the sixteen thousand dollars, uh, from a fund that was, you know.
Yeah. Well, my, uh, my, my recommendation is uh, don't try to save the general fund right now. We've got budgeted monies to do this.
So, so that's not, so I asked a question, can we do that? I mean, what's the order for that?
Well, I, uh.
If we make this motion and it passes, and this comes out of the general fund, can we go back later and say that this is one of the projects that we wanna fund with the other money, is what he's asking?
You can't, but whether that's, uh, that would be, uh, approved or whether it's a good policy, that's a whole other question. Uh, you can always ask, but I think, you know, my thought is uh, look at ways to assist in those categories, and we'll, we'll come to that when we get there, uh, on the agenda. Uh, but, but trying not to use that as a replacement of budgeted monies. This is, this is budgeted monies, general fund.
I, I get that, but if we don't use money from the general fund, it's not gonna go away. If we don't use this and, and it's not just we can save it for next year and use it if there's a shortage. There are very specific ways that we can use this money, and if that falls into that category, I say let's use that, and so that we have more options for the money from the general fund. So, so that's a wise way to spend the money.
I feel like we'll have no shortage of things we can do with the ARPA funds.
That aren't budgeted.
That aren't budgeted, yeah.
I mean, really, the, the collective group of projects that we need to get done, whether they get done out of those funds or this funds, I mean, there's gonna be more projects than money at this point, regardless of where it's paid from.
Uh, um, projects than we can fund right now. So I don't feel like utilizing the ARPA funds is gonna be a problem.
And the, the infrastructure, is that, that's just anything that's needed? It's not tied anything to COVID?
Correct, uh, but it should be tied to economic development, which most infrastructure is. Uh, so I, I, I suppose there are some infrastructure projects that wouldn't be appropriate for ARPA. Uh, but for the most part, water, sewer, streets, they are going to be, yes.
So what, you said that you got a call today or yesterday from the, the, the law firm, what did they, what did they tell you on what the cost would be?
I'll call him back tomorrow or next week.
That, oh, you didn't talk to him?
I talked to the principal, uh, at length, but I don't have a proposal.
Okay.
Uh, another alternative is possibly an accountant, CPA that can help. Uh, I don't know the CPA locally that is, uh, able to do this. It doesn't mean it's not an option. But, uh, wasn't really what we're looking at is either an attorney or CPA, uh, to assist uh, with the formation of the law problems.
And you said there's a law firm right in McMillan that have done several of these.
Correct, yes, and they're interested.
Dennis speaking, McMillan's, my chief in Portland.
But I would definitely recommend a law firm over a CPA firm.
Okay. Does anyone have, else have any comments or concerns before we take this to a vote?
Well, with modifying this down to just one tonight, would we be cutting this ten thousand in half?
You can, yeah, and just to, to, to pick a number, I, I, you know, I think that's fine, you know, to, uh, uh, it, it shows your financial support, uh, for this, and, uh, five thousand is a good number to work with. And have come in and meet with the group, uh, downtown business and, uh, help facilitate that discussion and, uh, uh, it's, uh, you know, uh, uh, that's all I can tell you at this point.
Are we expecting to vote on the discussion item for the proposal tonight? Was that your expectation?
That's up to you. It's, it's a discussion item, you don't have to.
Is there a reason? I mean, I noticed that in that you said that your, your, um, the staff suggestion, the recommendation was to approve it. Um, is there a reason why it was put in the discussion and not in the action items? Cause I mean, it's, it's worded more like an action item, and we've gone over this multiple times, Preston. That, you know, um, and multiple councillors have said, you know, Lee prepares differently for a discussion than an action item. So this just seems very tied to the proposal, and one you're saying we should pass tonight, and the other one you're saying, you know, it's a discussion item. So I, I'm trying to understand your, um, your agenda on, on why you did, why you set it up that way.
Yeah, well, uh, the financial support is, uh, to prepare to get going on this now. Uh, uh, and, uh, and, and, uh, uh, this complements the timing for what we talked about with LCAT and law. Uh, and, and we, council has discussed it a bit. Now, with the, the downtown facilitation, that's more money. Uh, 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 the mayor suggested it be a discussion item. A lot of you weren't here when Larry did his first project. Uh, there's a lot of questions. It's a, a discussion item because uh, some people on the council, uh, don't like to make decisions when you first see things. So I'm trying to work with you and others on the council that have a difficulty making decisions on a meeting on a new subject and, and, you know, I'm doing the best I can, but uh, to me, it seemed a good discussion item for, uh, the facilitation. That's, uh, some, that's a new project for a lot of you and, uh, and, uh, it, it's not critical and starts in October. Uh, uh, if you need more time to discuss it, it's, uh, that, you know, that is entirely fine. Uh, some items can be discussions, some can be action items and, uh, 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 you know, that, these two seem to be placed, uh, uh, appropriately in my mind.
Okay, let's circle back to the action item we're on right now, rather than dissecting the verbiage of a discussion item. Um, we're currently trying to decide if we want to go ahead and start a vote. Separating the two for just the downtown business association. Sounds like Preston said that, uh, five thousand, just splitting the difference between the two would be the most appropriate at this point.
So I moved authorized the financial support of up to five thousand dollars for consulting services to create the downtown business association nonprofit in Lafayette.
Okay, second.
Those in favor?
I, I.
I.
That's unanimous.
And then I would like. Being an action item, do we need to um, make a motion for us to?
I was just about to do that.
I don't think it has to be a motion for the second part.
No, but I was going to say, I would like to add the discussion, uh, uh, I, I would like to add the creation of LCAT to the discussion at next meeting.
When I do a discussion or action item next meeting?
Well, Kayla had said discussion, and it would be nice to have Marie here to have that discussion, and then at that.
So at the next meeting, do you wanna do discussion, then vote at the meeting after that? Because.
I would.
Make sure we're all very clear.
That way, if she brings in other information that we wanna follow up on, I think that's just more appropriate. It's not urgent. COVID's probably gonna restrict a lot of these activities anyways, so.
I have been very busy this last several weeks. Most of you already know that. But I would like to bring some of the citizens in so that they can, um, talk about their interest in helping with. And if you have people that I should.
Oh, it's me, okay.
Well, you sent me that list because I would like to have people so that, um, the community support can be shown.
Yeah, yeah, fabulous. Okay, moving right along to resolution twenty twenty, ooh, twenty twenty one eleven, it's a lot of ones here, sorry. Declaring a box stand surplus property. We have a box stand, it's rotting in the yard, it needs to go away. Uh, so this would declare it as excess property, so it can be sold, surplus property, excuse me. Do you have a chance to read this, and do they have any questions about this stand and its current?
I'm in favor of this.
So I, I'm in favor, if we've, if the city has surplus, we're not gonna do anything with it. I think it's important to, you know, to take care of that, so it's not a drain on resources and doesn't just rot. Um, I had a, a problem with the way it was worded, maybe this maybe look different. Um, it said that we approve or authorize the city administrator to um, get rid of it in any, dispose in any way most advantageous, and then I read it would even include donation. And I don't think we should donate it. I don't think we should write it off as a zero dollar. Um, but the other thought is, could a downtown business association make use of a box van for any activities or any, anything, or could a, um, community, could LCAT use that, um, for activities that it sets up and needs to move a bunch of stuff? So, um, if the city's done with it, that's fine, but let's, let's not just, you know, throw it away or write it off. If it's an asset, let's sell it. If one of these, uh, nonprofits that we're talking about could use it, then let's look into that.
Yeah, I would agree with Jim on that. At least removing that and saying that if it does not sell, then let's come back. So just remove the word donation. So just remove.
Direct sale or sealed bidding.
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree with that. If, if it's going to be donated, then we need to, um, I, I think we need to consider that again. First, um, I think we also need to have like an end date of this, just like, it's not going to be for sale forever, but it needs to be disposed of, um, within a certain timeframe.
That's where we could just add it to a discussion item and follow up for the next couple city council meetings, and we can kind of make a decision at that point.
The tires look good on it, so, I mean, I know it probably would fit towards the lower end, but I, you know, I also don't want that to be sold off for one or two thousand dollars, or so. Can we, can we word it so that it's, you know, if it's within the daily blue book value or within, you know, I, I don't wanna make it so strict that we can't sell it, but I also don't wanna sell it for five hundred dollars.
I don't wanna declare a minimum. You know, um, because I don't think we'll get more than the minimum if we sit here and publicly say at a minimum, it has to sell for this much.
Okay.
Well, if I say that, like, I offer you that much and not a penny more.
I think the wording of most advantageous to the city is a nice umbrella.
Okay.
To encompass that, as, you know, as far as re- that, removing the word, or to, or donate.
Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting in a minimum when I haven't even seen the condition of this vehicle or anything.
Well, it's right outside.
Hey, I don't wanna go.
It is, it is outside if anyone wants to go take a look, sorry, Lee.
And, and this wording in the motion and, and some of the background, that, that comes straight from already established council policy.
Yeah.
We get a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution of twenty twenty one dash eleven, declaring the nineteen ninety seven Chevrolet G three five hundred cargo van surplus to the city's needs. And direct the city administrator to dispose of the van in the matter most advantageous to the city, including but not limited to a direct sale or sealed bidding.
In seconds.
So, good question. It says that in the actual resolution, the donation, do we need to scratch it from there?
I didn't read that, so.
Right, no, but the, you, you said approve the resolution, and in the resolution on number two, it says donation. Do we need to modify the resolution before we vote on?
I think by doing this, even if we removed it from here, that automatically has to be updated.
I, I move to approve resolution as amended.
As amended.
Is that a problem? Do you say that? Is that a problem?
As amended. All right. Do I need to reread it?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Good point, though, Jim.
Please, did you vote?
I said aye, yeah.
Let me try to miss it. Okay. Okay, well, we move to the discussion item. Let's take a three minute break.
I call the restroom.
I have a bag of never hats and any paper towels.
I got you. I thought you were under a trimester of pregnancy. Pass your mouth now.
I had the steam plan. It was Friday night. Oh, fabulous. It reminded me of my favorite dinner, but then there used to be a gym. It was a suit, you know, kinging tile. With everything, you know, including the steam engine. It reminded me a lot, but it was, it was fabulous. And we had a meatball appetizer.
All right, we might get down before
Or baked baked meatball appetizer.
I started coffee before.
Bringing out a wonderful salad. It was fabulous. I told our journalists, I've been talking about her enough. I'm gonna do it. I'll see you next week, you know. I'm gonna take my wife to El Toro. Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I was spraying them. I'll prove it on my page. I have this show like.
Yes, I was like, I
And real good food. I had the special again here a few days ago. It it's basically your all dinner portion of everything. It's just you do this like four months.
Paper towels.
And the sauce. And they made the place look upstate.
Next city council, I'm in the rest of chair that I can actually Oh, I finally went. There we go.
That is the chair that I had before that if you move just right, it literally will rot.
Well, good. I didn't try. I can likely could reach for the and I was getting very frustrated.
Do we need them to move to have a chair for the whole city council?
Well, all my normally they go down, but this one I was, when I heard about here, I was like, that's amazing. It was not budging at all. Do you remember the city council meeting where I'd like say
And then you're gone? That's so hard.
It was that chair.
Did you want it somehow?
Finally, it went down.
It's that one. It's from Kayla. I'm certain.
I guess that one's got a different fact to it, so.
I'm certain that it's that one because it makes this weird noise like it's going to fall apart any minute.
It's squeaky. Need some WD forty.
I've gotten some sideways glasses, glances from Christine over the years of like
Um, put your name back on this one. I won't find it. My life doesn't always go down. It's fine.
Okay, everyone present, please back. Okay. Let's move on to our discussion item. First one is proposal from Economic Advancement Group for downtown facilitation. Larry, this is your agenda topic again. Um, now you talked to us a bit about your, what you had done with the downtown business association. This is really an opportunity for us to ask Larry questions. Now, I know we did that quite a bit before, but in our discussion, did anyone else come up with other concerns, questions for Larry that he might be able to address while he's here?
I did have one quick question, although you're not standing up. When you had the discussion before, I know that you had like a pretty long write out of what you had come up with when you had did the initial survey. And then what we received was like a very condensed version of that. And do you have a way to send possibly to the new counselors that didn't receive that original survey? A way to send that out to us so that we can review it because it's been eighteen months, but then the new counselors could see it. But that's maybe part of the old agenda.
Well, I sent it to everybody here like a couple of weeks ago, so.
Oh, yeah, you did. Yeah.
I can
Oh, yeah, you did. Okay, if you could at least resend it to me.
And Sheila, if you have any questions on it?
Okay. I just like as as a jumping board to start so that the counselors that were not present at that time would have a better idea of what you're working towards.
And the one thing about timing, the reason I suggested October is because we get into the holidays pretty quickly. And I'd like to get a lot of the work done before we get that two weeks, Christmas.
Yeah.
So that's a consideration, but if if the council wants it to be later, that that's okay too.
I think the sooner the better.
I think the sooner the better as well, so that we have business input on the urban renewal district. I think that is an important part of or component of those decisions that I personally will be making. So timing is fabulous, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. With the predictions for COVID, I I think it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Well, hopefully we've paved the way with that with the funds for five oh one C six. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Seeing you again. Been a while.
Long forward, finally.
We do. Have a good night, Larry.
Thank you.
She used to.
I know. Pretty soon it'll be five thirty and really dark.
Okay, next discussion item is use American Rescue Plan Act funds, urban. Uh, city has received four hundred and seventy three thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars and seventy six cents as the first of two payments. This discussion item is just kind of start discussing the funds and what we're going to do with them. There are very specific uses, so we can start planning on some of that. Everyone have a chance to read through the guidance that was given to us on these funds. And did you have any questions about that? I'm just pressed here to answer them.
Well, your honor, I could mention the the discussion there.
Yeah.
This this guidance from the National City is the the best that we've seen in a succinct format. But right on the first page, it talks about the four uses of the funds and A, B, C, and D. And I can tell you that, you know, I'm not going to be recommending anything for B and C. And I mean, if you want to, you will certainly track it down for you, but I I just don't think you qualify. I don't, that's not, that's not for us. But A and D, yes.
I was going to ask on option D, would that include like water meters?
Probably not. There's a, there's a portion of the meters that could probably work on this, but it's that might just be more trouble than it's worth because it's more maintenance. Our, our, our meters are are older and slowing down.
What about the the part that's going to be happening on Benaway Road?
The mainline meters in Tyler that we approved last meeting?
I was just because it's just not specific. So when I was reading this, I was thinking, well, what parts of the water could it?
Maybe, yes. You know, we can, we can track down that kind of stuff. It doesn't, that those projects help us manage the system.
Yeah.
But they don't add to the service, you see. So it's, it's uh, all I could say is maybe, you know, on something like that.
Okay.
Now, if we talk about putting in a sidewalk or extending a water main, this is, this is future growth. This is this is expanding the system, improvements in our wastewater treatment plant, building a second reservoir. I mean, those are absolutely uh, growth related, economic development related kinds of projects that are not you know, and so those are much more easily defined as, yes. And and I, you know, my, I would just encourage you to think of projects that is not funded right now.
But I think we got to be careful with like the wording of necessary. I just wish they would have given more guidance on this.
So the funds have to be allocated by twenty twenty four and spent by twenty twenty six, correct?
Uh, is that
Based on spending on projects outside of the timelines?
Yes, yes, and like, yes, that's, those are the big, correct.
So if we're looking at something like a reservoir, a few years down the road and we get, you know, two, three years down the road, right? Maybe it's time. Where where can we get the funds? What are we looking at? If we still have these funds, it can be put towards like a reservoir or something, a large infrastructure project like that, rather than small pieces of other projects?
Both. You could do both. A reservoir, there's a lot of light work to make a shovel ready project to work and be off the bid. Uh, the more you're shovel ready, the better you're up to get a grant. Uh, you know, we're talking about geotechnical survey and design. There's up to a half a million dollars there before you even bid the project.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of stimulus for that that can go toward that over time.
Right.
You know, I I expect to be giving you a list next month. It's not going to use all the money. It's going to use a portion of it. And and pool that money next year and do more substantial things. Uh, like, like Bridge Street, fixing Bridge Street and getting that paid or so. That's a huge thing. That's, you know, there, those kind of things that we don't have the money for now that aren't budgeted. Can we go back and try and, you know, replenish funds that's already budgeted? We can. I I think, but that's, I'm trying to encourage you to think about things that are very necessary and important, but we don't have the money for right now. You know, Kevin suggested some projects that that's great. That's, they're smaller ones, but they're not on our, they're they're not on our budget or nothing. That's, those are, you know, added to the list. I can't remember what they were. But I didn't want to get into too many projects just to get you thinking about that for next month. And you can certainly talk to Kevin or I in the meantime, and we'll be happy to track stuff down. This, the the league staff is helpful and and then we can, we can go to others like our city attorney, but there, there's a lot of cities were impacted with their utility funds. And how those funds might get used i- is still kind of up in the air, yes, but we don't know how and where. I don't really think that applies to us so much, you know. We're not looking to replenish lost revenue. You know, we're, we're, we're just, we were just blessed in our situation here with the effects on our community. And and we weren't nearly hit hard like other cities in Oregon who were devastated. The relying on like transient lodging fees to pay their police department, things like that. You know, we, we weren't impacted like that, so.
Could you guys send out an email at some point before the next meeting, kind of with the, some of the project ideas that you and Kevin have discussed?
Yes.
Could you also reach out to Ron since he runs the sewer plant and see if there's any necessary investments that he can think of? I know when Greg and I toured, you know, he he had it running as well as he could, but there were still improvements that seemed to be needed for the long term health of that plant, so.
It'll be on the list. You betcha.
Okay, but you know, if we ask, if you ask Ron directly, you know, he may have some specific projects.
I talk to Ron all the time.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Did, hey, did, did any other counselors read through this part of the packet and think about how this money could help small businesses downtown? Or are we pretty focused on infrastructure?
I I feel, I feel like it could probably be spread out on both. I don't think we have to say infrastructure only or small business only. This is the first of two payments, so we'll be close to a million dollars. I think we could definitely benefit both category A and category D.
Correct, yes.
I don't, I don't feel like we need to be exclusive to one or the other for sure.
Could this be used on the restaurant relief program? Especially since it says that on the next page, the funds may be used for any allowed purpose starting on March third, twenty twenty one. So we may be able to take all of the um, lost revenue from that, you know, or I don't know. I'd like to see if we could do that.
I'd rather see if we can use it to do like grants or something for small businesses, which I think would be a lot more beneficial than what the, I mean, you know, every business helps everybody. Largest chunks of cash help everybody too.
Yeah. Jim, Jim, I like, I like your idea, but I I I was kind of thinking along the lines that Christine was that, you know, look, we we could pretty up downtown with the right grants for this. Um, but no, I I understand what you're saying to replenish those funds in the junk. That's, that's great too. But yeah, I just, I'm I'm kind of I know we have a lot of projects to do, but the the downtown area between the pandemic and the construction and just there's a lot going on down there, not to mention it's been a long term goal of the constituents to get that to get that downtown area prettied up a little bit. I I think that we should kind of put our brains together and be a little more forward thinking on the, on the downtown development area if these funds are available.
I know you'll definitely get some ideas from staff on that too. Yes.
So in, in it also says economic impacts to households. I know for a while last year, the city, you know, they had the, they turned off the shut offs. Are things, I know for privacy reasons, you can't get too many details. Are there still a lot of households that are behind on that that?
No.
Everybody's caught up?
I think we
Not everyone.
Then we do a payment restructure where they had to pay a certain prorated amount for, I think it was like six months. So.
Right, and we implemented the, the, the grant, the
Micro grants?
The micro grants and all for businesses and individuals and, you know, all of that, you know.
I think it was like only hundred fifty bucks per household.
It was three hundred per household and seven hundred per business, if I remember correctly.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, like we said, not just focus on one thing.
Correct.
But if if there is some households that could benefit from a little bit of this, then be open to that.
Well, I would think in terms of a grant situation like like Christine suggested, it's how you pay back the lost utility revenues is really up in the air. And we're not hurting like that, like some cities. So I would encourage you to think about new things, new projects, new ability to help those folks to help downtown business, but not as a replacement of what we've already funded.
Yeah.
Like the restaurant relief program. Uh, you know, that's, that's what I'm encouraging council to think about is what can we do that we're not doing now? And I think there's, there's A and D or we'll come up with some good projects and don't, don't feel like you have to spend it all this year because it's going to be tough. You, you spend what's necessary and you kind of start developing a plan for the use of this year and next year. And and once you have a pretty good idea, at least on the funds this year, we come back and do a supplemental budget. We take care of that. Uh, the, these monies are going to go, they're in the bank. They're actually real dollars that now, why Oregon took so long to allocate it to the cities? I don't know. You know, I mean, Oregon was one of the last states to do that. I have no idea, but it's, it happened. Uh, and and we're grateful and and I know, I know this council is going to put it to great use. This is all wonderful news. This is all wonderful news, yes.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts before we move on? One on. I'll set you up. Okay, Public Works, uh, they kind of had a busy week.
Yeah.
A little bit of a water situation there.
I know it's not on this report, but I was like, what just happened?
For your power outage or the water?
No, the water, I was sitting in my, looking like, I thought there was like a car wreck or something.
There's been those too.
Well, it wasn't, and that's fine, there's, but yeah, that was, the water pressure was off and that's how you're posted on Facebook.
Yeah.
You didn't see all the other ten?
There were like fifteen before mine, I was like, oh shoot, I gotta call someone.
Well, no, a neighbor actually called me and was like, hey, did I, I'm like, who was that, oh, there was an accident or something, and then I got on Facebook and saw yours first.
So Preston, you wanna talk a little bit about uh, our water uh, situation that happened this week and its resolution?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, uh, uh, we're uh, we're down to three people in our public works department, uh, including our wastewater treatment plant operator. And uh, uh, our acting of public work supervisor uh, was Greg Robinson did a great job. He did everything he was supposed to, all the steps. Uh, he utilized our, our staff plus the contractor that broke with the water main. Uh, and uh, we uh, uh, isolated it so as we can and uh, and then went to prepare to fix it and uh, and when we felt knew that our uh, our reservoir was at a safe level, then we tried flushing out of the hydrant, some of the sediment and air in the lines. Uh, and uh, and then the next day it got buttoned up, you know, and uh, it was uh, uh, I, I think I've had one other water main break in, in eleven years. Uh, but you can see how it affected pressure all across the city.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and the force is so great that uplifted a lot of the asphalt there. And we've got a lot of repair that we're gonna need to do, I mean, in turn, I mean, a lot of repair, rock and asphalt. It's, you know, it's all easily fixable, couple of sidewalk panels, uh, but uh, uh, if there was any question in my mind about Greg becoming our next public works supervisor, that was salt this week, he did a great job.
Yeah, they.
And. Cause he made that decision?
It's been done, he is the public work supervisor.
You called him the interim. No, he sent out a.
On Tuesday, he was the interim.
Okay.
On Wednesday.
I'm just clarifying for the verbiage in which you used, that was unclear.
He passed the interview.
Yeah.
Maybe don't involve breaking a water main for the next interview.
I hope not, right, but uh, but it, it's not just him, but the other staff, the other members of public works crew jumped in, the contractors and and if we needed an extra side of hands, there are other cities that would have helped us. We didn't have to go that far, but we have a nice collaborative working relationship with a couple other cities. Uh, it didn't need to go that far, uh, but uh, uh, and then uh, they spent most of the day yesterday tracking another leak on eighth by uh, uh, by Joel Perkins, uh, and then spent most of today repairing that.
Right.
Uh, so, so even though uh, the break occurred in one spot, it, it splits.
Thank you.
And, and that's where you get a lot of the pressure, a lot of the water loss, uh, a large, large piece of pipe that perhaps would be replaced and uh, and with the main, it's always uh, uh, how are we doing on the reservoir? Cause we just have one reservoir. If that was not detected, for some reason, and we would have ran out of water on the city, and then you got a disaster. Uh, uh, you run out of water pressure and the whole city has to be on boil of water notice, all of that. And, and uh, luckily, you know, that has not happened in eleven years, uh, not had to be on boil of water notice, but uh, so two major water leaks, one main, one not, uh, but uh, 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 in, in just in one leak, that's a lot. And, and our crew is uh, uh, great and uh, uh, and since we're talking about it, uh, we've got some good applications, we've got two openings in public works. Uh, uh, both on the high side, uh, uh, like utility two and, and, and so, so that is, that is also very good news. Uh, during the time when construction is on its height and to get applications like that, I mean, we're just really grateful, so uh, uh, so we got folks coming in to interview for that next week, yes. Uh, anything else on the water?
I had a question, was that hit by the contractor because it wasn't marked correctly or because they were digging where they shouldn't have been?
They didn't know where they're not, shouldn't have been, uh, uh, so we locate, like, this was a water main, we locate the mains, uh, and, and it's up to them to not hit it. They, they, they obviously didn't have the height right or something, so uh, uh, it's uh, uh, it's, you know, they, they know they gotta do better. But uh, they are uh, expanding services throughout the city, there's a lot of boring going along, a lot of fiber, a lot of other uh, utilities, cable, things like that, um, I don't know exactly what all the utilities are, but there's a lot of work going on and and it's, it's great that Ophia is getting those enhanced services, uh, and so we try to work with them the best we can. Uh, uh, it's uh, more upsetting when they hit a sewer line.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's happened, uh, uh, but uh, uh, we've had a couple of water leaks, never a main. Uh, never a sewer main, you know, so this is, this is surprising that this happened. And believe me, they don't, they don't want to do that, so uh, they, they, they've got to do a better job, that's, that's no question.
Yes. All right, moving on to fire, um, just trucking along, Joe Monger got his EMT, so congratulations to Joe.
I saw that recognition on Facebook too.
Hey, Admin, Preston.
Hey, Charlie, I just have a couple of things to add, uh, uh, on the recruitment, so uh, other than the utility workers, we are hoping to have a uh, a code enforcement officer onboard by the end of the month. So that's on, uh, that's our hope, uh, we'll see how that works out, uh, but uh, we've got a, a, a experienced person, and so we're real happy about that, uh, the uh.
I think our citizens will be very happy about that.
Wonderful, Liz.
Yeah, uh, Herfordston Street property, uh, that's uh, uh, that we sold, basically it's up to the offer, it's not sold yet, it's contingent upon developing, getting their development approval. Uh, so we're, we're progressing down that path. Uh, I've seen a, a preliminary site plan that's uh, uh, they're gonna add to it based on a lot of our information, we've given a lot of infrastructure now and and so they'll revise that and uh, we could be having a pre-application meeting just uh, in the near future on that, so uh, that's exciting and moving forward, uh, and uh, that's all I have now.
That was incredibly short. Shot. We have no committees, right?
Can I ask you a question about the code enforcement summary, is that part of the admin?
Yeah.
Um, so I see on the time, you know, all but two of these are N A, I'm assuming that none of those were spent any time on, and the one that's in this last month, is that correct? Uh, the last two, they're Preston, you've got one in the time, on the second column, so the, I'm guessing those are the only two that received detention this month, I mean, understandably so, because we don't have a code enforcement officer. The, the, the table then, how do I tell what happened this month versus what's just from last month? Cause that's really the only thing I'm having trouble, and we don't have a lot updated from month to month, but I'd like to be able to see very clearly um, this much has been done or that much has been done from month to month, and I, it, it's hard for me to capture that here.
Yeah, uh, well, uh, uh, in terms of the time you're talking about, uh, or, or just overall?
Overall, you know, so I think, I think you spent two hours or somebody in the office spent two hours over this last month, one on each of those um, things, but then in the table below that, we've got meeting hours, uh, uh, noxious vegetation complaints, probably total hours accrued. Um, the eleven and the one-on-one don't match up, so I'm thinking, is that just stale data or how can I, how can I tell next month what's new versus just have them to have these side by side and comparing everything?
Well, right now, uh, uh, we're not spending a lot of time on some of these ongoing things uh, that shows on this sheet, uh, the ongoing, because when they get resolved, they come off the list.
Mm-hmm.
And the last, the monthly resolve complaints, uh, there, that's this last month, so that's a lot of them, okay? Uh, and the hours really are in those boxes right above it, it's not so much the time associated with the ongoing stuff. Uh, that's gonna get better, uh, when we have uh, our code enforcement officer onboard, but the box is right below that, it talks about the hours, that's, that's uh, more what we're doing in, in this current month for August.
In that first box there, the, right, right above the year-to-date summary, okay?
Uh, uh, above, yes, above those, uh, and maybe, maybe we can pull those out a little better, but that, that set of boxes right there really gives you the idea of, of hours and monthly uh, resolution.
Okay.
You know, there were, there were eleven items on the list that are no longer there, they've been resolved.
That were resolved in this last month.
Correct.
So, so I would personally like to see that those stay on, so we can at least see one snapshot of these were resolved. After that, once, once we've reported their resolve, I'm okay to have them come off, I don't think we need to list everyone, but that way I can see, hey, we, we've got eight that we resolved, um, and then the numbers match up, but I'd like to see that.
We could, we could do that.
Yeah, we can at least see what the issues were and what were resolved, just.
That's all I.
It's a work in progress, since this is a new um, sheet that we're all working off of, or, you know.
You bet.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We can have those resolved ones on there for, yes.
Yeah. So, um, I, I think I need clarification also, um, and maybe this falls into the ones that dropped off, but it's saying that, that we had three complaints this, in the month of August? And I don't see anything reported in the month of August.
Cause I think those are three that were resolved.
Those are the three that dropped off, that's what you're saying.
It, it could have been, uh, okay, that's, it, it, I'm, I don't know, it's either gonna be on the list or.
Cause it could have got resolved the next day, right, and so, so I understand that, um.
Correct, yeah.
I, I just think it's odd, there was not a single thing was reported for the month of August. Um, you know, and we, we know there's a lot of code violations around.
We resolved all of August, the whole month.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading it right.
Well, I, I think you are.
Today it is.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on accounts table or code enforcement? Lee, you good?
I'm all good, thank you.
Uh, for committee reports, Sheila, the downtown.
So I would like to report that the downtown fund committee did vote unanimously to approve um, the match grant for Martha's tacos to continue their improvement of the outside area and they're going to build a seating area, so they're gonna kind of go off of the picture for the most part from the um, architect that did the design for certain, a few businesses downtown, so.
That'd be great.
Yes, so they're very, very excited.
Yeah, that.
So they, they wanted to do that in coincide with the outdoor street improvements.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we're hoping that that will be the springboard for other businesses to go, oh, that's great, that's fabulous, let's, let's do the same thing, so. I believe we have a meeting scheduled for this next month for another business.
Yes.
How much is the grant?
It's twelve thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
It's a match grant, right?
It's a match grant, yes.
Right, and.
Good for them.
Uh, they, they, uh, their, their most recent billing permit was somewhere around forty-five thousand, of which thirty-three was eligible. Uh, so they got a twelve thousand five.
Nice, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, good for them.
Yeah.
And there are others interested, they're just kind of waiting to, for the ninety-nine rebuild to be done and uh, and, and, and see where they land over the winter and be ready for next spring, uh, uh, so it's, it's very exciting, we've finally got one under the belt with a billing permit, that's great.
Awesome. Lee, do you have anything to report on the committee you sit on?
Yes, the Parkway Committee, here's what I can report, and it's not all great, uh, the last time they met, I was out of the country. I could send you all the minutes, and the next time that they meet, I will be um, out of the state, so I will have missed two consecutive meetings for unfortunate timing, but if anyone's interested in the minutes of the Parkway Committee, I'm happy to forward them. Um, and I will report back after the next meeting I'm at.
Perfect, thank you. I miss any committees? As far as I said, there were none, so.
Planning is gonna be meeting, is it the twenty-fifth or the twenty-eighth? There's training and a meeting?
It's the September thirtieth is the uh, what, what is it, Thursday, right?
I, I have one suggestion, I know that we have a few different committees that are empty, I guess. Perhaps in your, um.
Next post?
Next post, yes, uh, that you could announce what specific ones we're open for applications, so that we could get those filled. Especially with the planning commission having a meeting coming up and there's vacancies in that.
I'll probably do it as a separate post, um.
It's just we have announced a few different times that there are openings, but having a specific set number and this is the process in which you can apply.
Yeah.
I think we might, I think we might get some, get lots of them, fill that, those vacancies.
Yep.
Which would be a important way for citizens to volunteer and to be part of some pretty big things coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, September twenty-fifth is the planning commission training. And then the tw- thirtieth is their next meeting.
Right.
Planning Commission, yes.
New counselor reports. Do you have anything to report? Uh, I've said one thing, I know Marie had reached out to everybody about the potential for a work session um, with Kimmel County Sheriff's Office. She didn't hear back from everybody. Was that?
It was an email Preston sent to everyone and he asked us to let Marie know what was a good day for us.
I don't believe I got one from Maria, I think I just got Preston's email.
Uh, same, same here.
I think Marie's.
I think it was through Preston.
Specific email came back to you and I because we had specifically said something about a specific thing.
She, she, she reached out to Sheila and I, asking what days were good for us and um, I assume she reached out to everybody, um, but yeah, she, you see, that, that one email was just to you and I.
Right.
But in the, in the big picture, Preston sent out an email to all of us, asking us to let um, uh, Marie know what the, what our choice was, the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth, which was a better day.
On September?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, and I'm open, I don't, I don't have.
It would work better for me, the twenty-eighth, and also the planning meetings on the thirtieth, so I don't know if we want to have two. Or, I mean, it's not, everybody's gonna go to both, but I don't know what the requirements are on the city for two days in a row. You said six-thirty, right, the normal time for either of those days?
I think the importance of working with the sheriff is like at this point to revitalize the code, especially with a code enforcement officer potentially coming on, and like, we really need to get that work.
I think a work session would be valuable.
Yeah.
Does the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth work better for you?
Either one.
Okay.
I'm flexible.
Yeah, either, either one.
Sorry.
You look. I think the twenty-ninth would work better for me, but I can probably make whatever work.
And Jim, you said the twenty-ninth?
No, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth would probably be hard for me.
I, I can make the twenty-eighth work as well, but six-thirty P M.
And Lee?
Uh, I don't have my work calendar law, I have to log into a cloud and everything, but um, I, I think either day would work, but I will, I will follow up by email if I have conflicts.
Okay. My only conflict would be, I can't judge that, so. My only conflict would be, I can't judge that, so, um, any day, either of these days would work for me potentially or not. So let's plan on the twenty-eighth, it sounds like that's most likely to work for the majority here.
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, yeah.
So September twenty-eight, six-thirty PM work session. Yes, that is a.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yes, great.
Six-thirty, you said, correct?
Yes.
And just for clarification.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is anything, anyone have anything else to add for the good of the order?
Shocked, but it's not even nine o'clock yet.
I just need a motion.
I second, or.
No, I can't make a motion.
Kayla, it's your turn to make it, all right. I'm moved, children. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, John.
I'll slide over back to you. I think that was all of it.